Get lost when there's 200 pages of stuff.
Seventeen forty four West Ross.
Seventeen forty four.
Seventeen forty four West Ross Road.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay.
All right, it's six o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Bring to order our planning commission meeting for August nineteenth, twenty twenty five. The invocation would normally be given by Scott Shay, but Commissioner Garner will fill that in. And then we will have the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Anderson.
Our beloved Father in heaven, we pray this night, Father, that thy Spirit will be with us to guide us in doing those things which will help benefit this wonderful city that we live in and our citizens. We pray that we'll be mindful of each other's thoughts and help each other to come to consensus. And Father, we're grateful for your trust in us and pray that you'll watch over us and bless us with those things you see that we stand in need of. Humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of this whole free public liberty and the justice of our home.
Thank you. All right, next item is the adoption of the meeting agenda, which has been posted in accordance with state law. Take a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
A second? Oh, we have motion and a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any post? Uh, we'll now be confirming the meeting minutes from the meeting and work session from July fifteenth on twenty twenty five. Barring any notes or notations that need to be updated, we'll take a motion to adopt those minutes.
Chair King, I'll make a motion that we adopt the regular meetings as posted for the regular meeting and the work session for July fifteenth.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Okay. First item, or number three item, uh, we have a public comment. Uh, we will, this is an opportunity for the, uh, public to address the planning commission regarding items that are not scheduled for a public hearing on this agenda. Uh, we would ask that you consider others and limit your comments to three minutes. So if there's anyone here to make a comment on one of the items listed on the agenda, we would ask that you wait for the appropriate time for, for those public hearings. Well, go ahead and open public comment. Anybody online? Okay. Go ahead and close public comment. All right. Our first item is a preliminary plot for Westlake Landing.
All right, so this is a, it's a commercial plat down on the corner of, of, uh, two thousand west and twenty seven hundred south. What's been proposed here that, well, I guess before I get into it, um, there are a couple of things in terms of conditional approval, and we have, we have a couple of items like this tonight. Um, so we reached a point where there were some, some items that the, uh, the applicant was still working out with our city engineer. Um, so he has some outstanding comments, planning and, and fire. I believe fire actually had an outstanding comment as well. Uh, planning is good to go on this one. Um, but, uh, in terms of the recommendation, we do have this, uh, these, these, uh, conditions here. So, um, we, we do recommend it be approved based off of the discussions that we've had with the applicant. We have full faith that they'll address everything. I just wanted to go over that first. Um, oh, and I also have one person here online joining. Okay. So this subdivision is, uh, it's just this area here. Um, so the, the actual corner is going to be a separate piece of property. Um, you have two access roads that are proposed to come into this area for potential residential development in the future. Uh, currently, the number of lots here allows it to be a minor subdivision. Um, the, uh, they're going to be dedicating some right of way. And, uh, we also had some previous right of way dedication here that'll be removed as part of this plat. So, but this would be, uh, really the first commercial development in the area. Um, so we were hoping to see some commercial development down here, uh, when we anticipated the West Davis corridor coming in and, and seeing that, uh, two thousand west um interchange. So the the overall layout here, though, to my understanding, they have some clients that are looking at, uh, properties already. Um, the, uh, there is a lot of internal access here, though. And one thing that did come up as we were discussing it this morning is ensuring that we have internal access to this property as well, uh, so that they aren't, uh, limited to access only from, uh, either the, the public road here or, or from the, the public existing roads. Um, but again, like I said, the, the staff is confident the applicant is, is gonna address what is remaining. Um, so uh, based on what has been proposed here, we would recommend that conditional approval. Um, and for those who are new to the commission, if anyone decides to make a motion along those lines, um, we would just recommend that, uh, I mean, you can use the language or not. It's up to you. It's recommended language, but that it does include, you know, on the conditions of, and I've, I've listed those two up here. Um, but that's all I have for now. Entertain any questions from the commission?
I have a concern, Royce. Um, Trailside Park is adjacent to the property. Uh, the Syracuse Trail is right through there at roundabout area. Since the avenue of the, the freeway there, two thousand west is gets a lot of traffic in the afternoon and evenings. It also happens to be where a lot of people jog and are exercising in the mornings before work, going to that Trailside Park, uh, connecting the, the, uh, trail system that goes right through that roundabout. So my concern would be, uh, additional potential pedestrian risk if there's a lot of commercial activity right there in addition to the normal traffic and all the pedestrians recreating.
Yeah, no, that is a good, good point. Um, given our
Up to navigate as a, uh, as a jogger as it is.
Right. Yeah, and we, and we don't want to increase danger there. I mean, one of, one of the aspects that is uh, in, in a comment that needs to be addressed still is right of way dedication as part of a trail uh, plan along the northern side of this property. And that, that may, I don't know if that necessarily alleviates the, the pinch point here. Um, and that is something we'll have to address specifically when this property develops, but, uh, that would allow for a wider uh, trail area here on the south side of twenty seven hundred that would accommodate more, um, more traffic, you know, pedestrians and runners and, and bikes and so on. Um, but as far as the corner itself, uh, where that isn't within the project area per se, um, uh, as far as our plan goes, we don't really have any uh, anything specifically to address the safety aspect there outside of, you know, we have crossings, they're, they're clearly marked designated. It is, it is a trail master plan area. Uh, and in the future, at some points, we anticipate there may be a, a light there at that intersection. Um, but that would be future developments and, uh, that would also reroute potentially, uh, bluff so that it's no longer such a heavy intersection.
Thank you.
And will you just briefly point out that intersection or public road access we're talking about on two thousand west, just on your?
Let's see here.
Seven on seven. Yeah, just so I can.
Yeah, so, and you're, you're talking about the proposed roads?
Correct.
Yeah, so we have one here that's gonna line up with Trailside Drive, and there's another one that comes in from the north side that would line up potentially with the future realignment of Bluff Road. Um, so we, we have one from up here, one from over here. And, and one thing that I, I did forget to mention, um, is there is a, a point of non-conformity with the code here, and they are kind of painted into a corner in the sense, uh, the code requires that between intersections, the center lines have to be at least three hundred and eighty-five feet if you're going thirty-five miles per hour. So, uh, there's nothing they can really do about that. These are existing streets, and we would like the road to line up. Um, so the planning commission has the ability to allow that, uh, like essentially an administrative variance, more or less, um, to allow them to put the streets closer together. Um, so again, if they're lining up with this existing street, it's not creating more non-conformity. It would just be extending across the road. The separation here, though, just when it was approved, for whatever reason, this doesn't comply with our current code. And so we wanted to make sure that was addressed as well.
Right, that's what I was referring to, just so I know that we're trying to aesthetically match those roads up and make it all fit.
Yes, we would like them to intersect so it is a straight shot rather than creating more issues.
Thank you.
Okay. This item is open for a public hearing. So, um, again, if you have, uh, comments or concerns about this particular item, we will go ahead and open public hearing, same as before. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less.
It's Charles Osman.
Well. Seeing none, go ahead and plot, close public hearing. Um, is Charles Osman the, or the developer in room?
My name is Charles Osman. My office, I live in Liberty, so I'll just give you my office address is three forty west Antelope Drive here in, um, Clearfield. So I'm the developer and landowner on this. This is Mike State, and he's our, um, civil engineer that's done all of the work on this. We can kind of answer a couple of your questions, um, to do with your trail question and the safety on that. We have already in our design added additional roadway space as per what was requested along twenty seven hundred, and then the piece at the bottom here on two thousand, we've already addressed that, so there will be additional roadway where the public can ride their bikes or, um, jog if they want to jog in the road, I guess. So we have addressed that. Um, we can't really address the main corner because that is owned by Wasatch Investments, um, who are also the owners of Holiday Oil, and they will be bringing in theirs separately from us. But we are designing together, so we know that they are doing a similar thing to what we have done. So we, we feel we have addressed that for you. And they may not be markings on the road until the city decides what to do on that, because that's not our place to mark. But we have created that, um, space for that to happen. As far as, uh, your question, all we can really do is line up with Trailside Drive. If there was another option, we'd roll with it, but there doesn't appear to be any other way to do it than what has already been designed. Any other questions I can answer for you?
Questions from the commission? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion and take a motion after. Would just like to reiterate that whoever does make the motion that we do include the, um, city notes and the concerns that will, uh, be met before, for the conditional approval.
No comments, I can make a motion.
Cool.
Uh, move the planning commission, give a conditional approval, uh, the request of Charles O- Osman for the minor plat called Westlake Landing Property, located at twenty-two hundred west, twenty-seven hundred south, ten thirteen point six four eight acres in the G C zone with the conditions that all staff comments must be addressed before the plat is recorded with Davis County and recognizing that the access road at two thousand west does not comply with the seven point five second separation requirement.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item. A site plan, uh, for the request by Fort Street Partners, uh, commercial site.
Fellow commissioners, uh, I need to recuse myself from this item. I have a, a client that's, uh, involved with the Fort Street Partners, so I'll I'll stay quiet.
Thank you, Commissioner Nielsen. Appreciate that. Uh, we'll navigate that for the minutes.
All right, so this, uh, this site plan, it's kind of an unconventional type use, uh, that we don't, the, the code doesn't necessarily address a lot of specifics here in terms of access, but, um, we, we met with the A R C a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, I feel like we've, we've been over this pretty thoroughly in terms of trying to make sure that the code applies as, as best it can. So, uh, usually our uses, there's some sort of a pedestrian type access to the, the actual, uh, use itself. And in this case, there is a pedestrian access, but it's only going to be for employees on the side there. The actual customer access is just going to be automobile only, so kind of looking at this in a similar way as a excuse me, as a drive-through only, uh, business. So essentially, people would drive in from this direction, north is on the right or left side, and they would stay in their cars to have their oil changed and then pull out this way. So, um, we do have, uh, in terms of the pedestrian access requirements, everything that is required for a regular access has been met here. Again, just for this pedestrian entrance, um, the, uh, A R C, go back up to report, the A R C did make a couple of recommendations, one of which is, has been addressed by the applicant. Uh, and the other, uh, they were, they were a little concerned about whether it was going to be necessarily required. I, I told them that is up to planning commission's deliberation. So the first one was that lighting on the west side of the building, they've, they've added that. There were some concerns from the A R C about, uh, security. And, uh, the second one there is about placing awnings over the garage bays on the north side. Um, the, the code has some relatively loose language about awnings over main entrances, but it's not a requirement. It's more of an option. There's, there's kind of a series of options that can be added over main entrances for buildings. Uh, and awnings is just one of those things. Technically, they do meet the requirements of the, of that code, so, uh, this wouldn't be a code requirement to add the awnings. If, if the planning commission decided that the awnings were needed, uh, that would be something that we would need to have some sort of determination of, uh, here's why, right? Some justification for, for that. So, um, let me give you an idea of what that looks like here. So the north elevation, uh, it's pretty, um, I mean, this, this does again comply also with the requirements for the subdivision. Um, they, they took some steps to change some coloration and things and bring it into compliance with, uh, the design pattern book, but again, if awnings were required, it would be along, uh, this side. So, um, the, the overall design of the building, that's, I guess that's relatively flush with the building. Um, the, the tower, uh, section here is, is facing the road, and that was a negotiation, uh, with the applicant. We do require the main facade to face the road, and in this case, it just wasn't functional for the use. So, um, yeah, we've, we've been over quite a few elements of, of technicality, I guess, in the code on this one to try and make it fit as best as possible. So, um, again, if the awnings are required, it would just be over this section. Um, and we would need some sort of reason why, per se. Uh, the, the A R C, the discussion there, it was essentially, that would clearly identify the entrance, which, um, I feel like it is fairly clearly identified. They're gonna have signage and things as well. Um, but it would also help, you know, with, with the architecture in terms of, um, varying that wall plane a little bit. So, uh, but that, that was pretty much the extent of the discussion with the A R C. So, uh, if the planning commission would like to do that, that would be a condition of approval. Um, and again, that first item has, has already been addressed. So you can add that as a condition if you'd like, but the applicant has voluntarily taken care of that. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Before you, what, and what's your thoughts on bicycles? What?
I was gonna say since
Oh, yeah, no, that is a good point. Yes, the bicycles, I, I, I made the applicant aware of that. There does need to be bicycle parking. That is a good point. Um, so the bicycle parking could be added really anywhere in here. Um, they only need one bicycle parking space per the number of spaces they have. So, um, that is something the applicant is working on as well.
I think we can have that in as a condition as well. All right, this, uh, item is available, is open for public hearing. So again, if you're here to make a comment on this item tonight, we'll open up public hearing. Please limit your, uh, comments to three minutes or less. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public hearing. Open it up to the commission. Do we have the developer here? With us?
You're online.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, uh, Jennifer Nino is with Fort Street Partners.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, questions from the commission for the developer at all? I, I would like to just reaffirm and confirm what I heard with you, Royce. Um, they, they are planning to do the awnings. Um, that's part of what they're, they're going to be doing, and they are planning on doing the bike, the bicycle, uh, parking, correct?
So the, the bicycle parking, yes. Uh, the awnings, that, that was a concern of the applicants. They, they would rather not do that from what the architect told me. So, if the commission again wants to do that, that's something that, again, we need to justify to them because we're we're requiring in that case, something that would be above and beyond what's in the ordinance.
And the, with the applicant online, can you give us comments regarding that with the awning? What maybe your concerns are?
Um, the concerns are just the additional costs associated with the build. If we can keep it a little bit more on the affordable side, that would be our, our concerns associated. But if that's a requirement, we would just want to understand where the commission is coming from.
And, and Mr. Chair, uh, so just pulling it up, this is what I was referring to, um, in terms of the, uh, the entrances section. So it says that they have to have at least three of the following, some sort of prominent architectural feature, complementary at differing materials or colors, increased use of windows and glass, pedestrian amenities. It may include da, 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 right? And awnings is one of those many things. And increased landscaping, uh, they already, uh, have these three on that side. Um, so again, they, they do meet the ordinance. If we wanted to require that, again, it is above and beyond.
I honestly don't think those awnings are needed. I mean, I don't even. And honestly, I mean, you see a lot of awnings on, on buildings as they get older, they get, you know, worn out, and they just look bad. And I, I honestly
It's one thing that doesn't usually get, uh,
Yeah.
And if they're already meeting the code, I'm
Yeah, they're, if they're meeting the ordinance in the code, I agree.
I would also add that if we required awning, it might set a precedent in the area of others needing to do the same, and then we potentially exacerbate that same issue.
Yeah.
Have a whole corner area that's got all these, you know, additional features that need to be up kept to maintain the integrity of the area and its look.
I agree. Um, this, to clarify, Royce, this is the property that's going west of the Jags, correct?
Yeah.
And the, uh, the building will be facing Antelope Drive. Well, basically, those, those bays will be facing Antelope.
That's correct, yeah, the, uh,
The exits of them, will we? The entrance as well. You won't even see the, you won't even see the awnings from the, from Antelope.
Entrance will be off of three thousand west?
The entrance would be through the, uh, internal drive. So there, there's one, a couple of properties to the west that would come up and then east. And, uh, you'd have to come in from the north of this property. Um, but this is gonna be the southern elevation that'll be facing Antelope, and there's the northern elevation that would be the main entrance.
Okay. Yeah, they've, uh, they, they put one of these up north in, uh, West Point. It's not bad looking.
No.
That's good. All right, if there are no other comments, we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I move the planning commission approve the request of Heather Lulyn, uh, for a site plan called Take Five Oil on property located three zero six two west, one seven zero zero south, containing point seven one acres in the G C zone.
Thank you. We have a
We need to have that condition in?
Do we need to?
Oh, yes, we need the condition.
Oh, yeah, if you wouldn't mind adding the bicycle parking.
Okay, um, do I need to reset my motion then?
No, just stay adding a condition.
I move that we, uh, add the recommended uh, bicycle parking, uh, must be shown on the site plan drawings before a building permit will be grounded.
We have a motion?
Second.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is a zoning amendment for a minor subdivision. This will be available for public hearing as well. Uh, Royce.
Okay. So we have a, an application here for it's, it's more of just a lot split, uh, but technically, anytime you subdivide a property in the city, it's, it's gonna be considered an official subdivision. So, uh, the intent of this is to split off an existing home from the larger property. So this property is just west of the, uh, commercial property we were just talking about. Uh, and currently there is, uh, subdivision that has been in, in process to the west of this one. So the subdivision plat basically just breaks off this piece here. This house parcel leaves a section for future development. Um, there, there's also gonna be a rezone associated with this one, so, uh, it is a little bit unique. And again, this would be a conditional approval. So the condition in this case, though, would be conditional on the rezone passing with the city council. Uh, it is up to the, the planning commission. You can either do a conditional approval with this one now as it is, or you could, uh, recommend it be continued until the, the, the city council passes the R two rezone, uh, assuming that they do. Um, the, what's shown here would require the R two zoning, uh, the current zoning does not allow for this size of property. So if it was rezoned, this could be approved, it would be just fine. Uh, but the zoning does not currently apply, so we can't approve this here tonight. And so any, any sort of approval would be conditional on a, on a future approval of a rezone. Um, in terms of the review, the, there were some really minor, uh, comments that I had, just remaining, renaming some of these parcels just for clarity, uh, for the, for the county, things like that. So it's just clerical things. Uh, the dimensions of what's shown and, and, uh, how it's laid out all complies with the R two zoning. So again, with that conditional approval, that it would, it would apply. That's all I have.
Perfect, thank you, Royce. All right, we will open this up for public hearing. Same rules as, as before. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public hearing. Open it up to the commission.
Royce, with this remainder parcel that we're looking at, this huge triangle, is the future plan for this to be R one, R two, all the way to the end of that?
Yeah, so the request is for the whole property to be R two. And so, oh, sorry, Noah's, Noah's correcting me.
Uh, just the house would be rezoned to match the request of size. The rest of it remain A one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. That's just a good.
That's a separate application that's also on the agenda here. We'll deal with that in a minute.
Thank you for the clarification. I just was trying to look through the packet and get that information.
If there are no other questions, the commission will take a motion. And this is a conditional based on conditional approval, based on the approval of the rezoning.
Correct.
So are we just approving the parcel split? Is that all we're approving here? Just with the condition?
Yeah. And it technically, like I said, it is a subdivision just because it does create another lot. Um, so it's, it's technically a minor subdivision is what this would be. But yeah, it's for all intensive purposes. It's just a lot split.
Can you bring up that language just for us?
Um.
Okay.
Commissioner Anderson. Yeah, I move that we conditionally approve the minor subdivision application from David Bennett for approximately 3.165 acres located approximately 2402 West, 2700 South. Uh, with the condition of a city council approval of the rezoning of the lots.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Next motion on the agenda is a conditional use permit request by Shay Barton.
Yes. And actually, uh, so we, the way that we set the agenda up, just, uh, we put both of these items into item. I believe it's, what is the item four there? Item three? The, the rezone as well, uh, would be included in that. So, um, if I could just go over that quickly, if that's all right?
Yeah.
So this is, this is for the project we were just talking about. And as Noah clarified, that smaller lot is the one intended to be rezoned. The rest of it to remain is A one. Uh, A one is kind of our placeholder zone for future development. Uh, technically, if, if the rezone was approved and the lot was then subdivided and recorded, um, they could potentially build a house on the other one because it does have enough street frontage there on 2700. But it just would be one lot and there isn't enough to do more than that. So they do have a stub coming in from the east side. Uh, my Google Earth imagery, I think is not updated to the, to, uh, show that yet, but there, there is a, a stub roughly there-ish that would come in. So, uh, they have the street frontage here for a lot. They also can then potentially rezone the rest of this to something else. And then, uh, they would have access to build, uh, in that area as well. So, but again, that would be future developments. Uh, the only section being rezoned is just this house and its yard. So the request here or this, this, uh, recommendation, this is a recommendation to the city council. So a motion would be along the lines of, uh, you know, that, that we approve or we recommend the city council approve the rezone. But this is, this would facilitate that subdivision plat. That's all I have.
Thank you. And being as we already had public hearing on that, on this item altogether. This is the applicant. Do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, well, I guess what we're trying to do is we're splitting my mother's house off the rest of the property. I'm, I'm keeping the remaining acreage. Uh, we're splitting it off so we can sell her house. That's basically what, what we're trying to achieve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions from commission on this one? Yeah, we'll, uh, take a, a motion for recommendation to city council.
I will make a motion that we, for recommendation to the city council for approval of the property located at, I just, oh, 2402 West, 2700 South to be, um, moved to, um, R two. And this is a recommendation to the city council.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. All right, now. Shay Barton.
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that.
No, no, no. Thank you. It was a double.
Yeah. So this is a, it's going to be a home occupation, uh, and in, in our code, home occupation, home business. It's the same, same thing. Um, so we, we've received this application specifically for, uh, it's, it's sort of a tutoring, uh, service for dyslexia, uh, folks with dyslexia. Um, the number of employees is compliant with the code. What they proposed is, is all compliant with our home occupation code. Um, just given the, the size of the business, it does require it to come to planning commission for approval. So, um, if approved, they would be able to operate within the parameters of what's in the code. But if they added another employee or, uh, expanded the, the school to include a greater number of students, that would require a move to a, a commercial zone. So, these, these home businesses allowances are, are set up specifically to be, keep it, um, as compliant with the, the existing character of the neighborhood as possible. Um, you know, you want to be able to essentially drive down the street and not really know that it's there. So, um, that's, that's basically what is, is proposed here. It'll be in the back, uh, backyard area in a, an accessory building that's proposed. Um, and so they have provided, uh, let's see. Well, they provided, they're, they're going to be applying for a building permit. So the building doesn't currently exist. But if this is approved, the building will be built and they will be able to operate their business. Um, and the building of the building is separate. So with the way this is, is written, just to be clear, uh, the conditional use permit being requested from the planning commission is for the business itself. Uh, the building is something that we address at a staff level. We don't have to worry about that, but it does relate to this in the ten, in the sense that, uh, you can't use any more than 30% of any, uh, floor area for a business. And so they're, they're going up to that amount. Um, and they've, they've clarified that for us. So, yes.
Royce, as you are, um, looking at this for the building side, um, my question is, I was reading through this and trying to find it too, is drop off for students and parking?
Yes. So off-street parking is provided for the, uh, uh, let's see, I think they have that here. So they've got parking for their employees here. Um, pickup and drop off would be on the road.
Okay.
So, uh, with the number of students that are tutoring, we don't anticipate any large traffic issues by any means. Um, but it is up to them to make sure that people aren't blocking driveways and fire hydrants and things like that.
Thank you.
All right. We have, this item is open for a public hearing. Uh, again, we'll open up the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public hearing. All right, um, is the applicant in the room? You mind just coming up? You don't mind just stating your name and?
Yeah, Shay Barton, um, address 3594 West, 2050 South, right by, um, Buffalo Point Elementary. So our backyard backs up right next to that right there.
Okay, perfect. I think the only comment so far is Commissioner Garner's about drop off?
How many students do you usually have?
So I only do students one at a time. So it would be one-on-one. So at most it's going to be three students that would be in there at a time. So, and usually parents drop off and then pick up because it's an hour session. So,
Great.
Yeah. And we, I have, we're right on the corner. So there's, we have lots of parking right there too. So, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? All right.
I, I do have a question and forgive my ignorance on this. So, what distinguishes this from somebody that just teaches piano lessons in their house? If they've only got one student at a time for an hour, it's not like you've got a queue of 20 people in the parking lot waiting. There's not a bunch of people loitering about. So how's that different than somebody just teaching piano lessons at their house?
That's a good question. Uh, per the code, it's, it's just about the percentage of the building that's used. So, uh, that 30% threshold is, is what pushes it into that, uh, major conditional use. So if there, if it was like a piano lesson, right? The square footage of that is really tiny usually, but in this case it's a larger area that's being utilized.
So once you get to 30%, you require a conditional use. And then at a certain percentage, you said, was it 34? Then you have to get rezoning?
So if they go above that, then there, there really isn't any way to, uh, uh, operate a home occupation outside of that bounds. They're going to have to go to some sort of commercial space. So it's not necessarily about the number of students in this case. It's about the size of the building and the building is small. So that's, that's why.
Talking about the, the.
Thank you.
Dwelling unit that's going to be added in, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Barton.
Yeah, I would add, uh, it's also about the number of cars that will be coming as far as the number of students and the intensity of use. And so, uh, residents in most zones are, are allowed to have a home occupation. But where it crosses over from just a normal home occupation into a major conditional use, it, it, there's a chapter in our ordinance that you can read. It sounds like, uh, you know, you're interested in reading out the specifics of it. So, um, in the chapter, it, it explains, um, when it becomes a major conditional use. And it has to do with the number of students that will be visiting. And, and as well as the size of it. So it crosses a threshold where maybe it, it has the potential to create a problem for the neighbors. And that's why we have a public hearing. That's why we want to talk about it. Make sure that they've worked through all of their parking and potential issues. And the way a conditional use will work is it, it's an allowed use, um, but planning commission can review it and add conditions related to mitigating the potential impacts of that use. Uh, might be hours of operation or, you know, reviewing the specifics of where people are dropping off and picking up so that it just makes sure it's safe. But I'd be happy to talk more about the specifics of it after if you want.
No, you've, you've sat aside me. I, I just, uh, interesting comparison. Thank you, Noah.
Ms. Barton, if, I, I actually have a quick question for you. Um, sorry, and just to clarify, because Noah brought it up, what is your hours that will be dropping off and picking up?
It, it'll.
It's better for the, for the record to go to the front.
So most of the students I see, um, are after school hours. So they'll come when they're done with school. So usually it's between like four and seven. Um, I do have quite a few, um, like homeschooled students that I see during the day. So, um, the busiest hours are going to be between four and seven where kids are available to come to tutor. Um, but I will have students coming from probably like 7:30 in the morning to so I have some come before school and then my homeschool students come during the day. So.
And it's like you said, like usually like one, two at a time.
Yeah, uh, yeah. So I'll, it depends on how many employees I'll have. If I have, if I have two, then I'll have two. And if I have, you know, whatever that is, so.
I, the, the, the reason I'm asking is obviously with the proximity to the elementary school.
Yeah.
Everything, so.
Yeah, usually it's, they'll be coming when that traffic from school is done. So it'll be like four o'clock when I, it starts getting busier. So usually the, the traffic's cleared out by then. So, yeah.
My daughter goes to that school. So.
Oh yeah. So you know how it's crazy. It's not as crazy as it was, but it's crazy. Yeah. So.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll take a motion.
I'll motion to move. I motion to move the planning commission that we approve the request of Shay Barton for a tutoring home business on property located at 3594 West, 2050 South in the R one zone.
And this is for the conditional home, uh, uh, use permit?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Move on to the number eight. For a final plat for Coal West at the Salt Rock Phase.
Okay. So, uh, you may recall a few months ago, we, we saw the rezone for this one and the preliminary plat go through. Uh, PRD is, is kind of nice that way. Uh, rezone requires a preliminary plat. So we, we got to see it all together. Um, so the city council approved this back in May and they've been working on, on taking care of a final plat. So this is going to be kind of the Northwest section. Um, so West Davis corridor is here and, uh, then they've got the, the trailside development up here with, um, some of the newer developments that have gone in, uh, PRD developments on this side. So, um, what they, they do include some open space. Uh, the applicant's also aware, there are some buffer requirements there against the highway. Um, but other than that, it's, it's fairly standard, like single family or a PRD type development. So, um, but based on what's proposed here, uh, everything meets the requirements, the code, no conditional approval needed. This is more or less a rubber stamp. Uh, we would recommend approval so they can get going with recording this plat.
All right. And this is just a discussion of motion for the commission tonight. So, discussion. If none, take a motion for approval or whatever.
Have a question. Parcel A, is that a retention basin or?
Let me get down to the construction drawings. So there is kind of a mixture here. You can see the, the elevation lines that are proposed and there's concrete here. So there is, there's detention, but there's also just open space. So this will be kind of play area. Um, again, there's, there's buffering required here. So there will be a sound wall. Um, even though it is up against the highway. But that's, that's part of their open space requirement in terms of community use in general. So, but there, there aren't any like specific amenities that are planned in that area.
Thank you.
And quick question, Royce. Um, our fire marshal had, you know, like four items. Have all those items for him been addressed?
They have. Yeah. I, so I have an email from him that's, that said everything was taken care of. Still missing one hydrant. Okay. So it sounds like he's saying we can take care of the hydrant at an administrative level.
And thank you for being thorough.
Always. All right. We'll take a motion.
I will move then. I'll move the planning commission approve the request of Chase Freeburn for a final plaque called Salt Rock Phase One. Um, on property located at 1744 West Ross Road containing 10.34 acres in the PRD zone. And that all requests from the staff has been approved.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. We will take a motion to adjourn to work session.
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We are in work session. All right. We will start with department business where city council liaison.
I just have one quick update from, uh, previous item that you guys have discussed. So there was a, uh, a request for a general map, uh, change and a rezone for the property on Antelope Drive just west of the golf course clubhouse. We, you guys had a discussion about golf ball safety and things like that. So that, uh, general map, uh, change and rezone was approved to go general commercial. And I think that's all I had for you guys.
Right.
Thank you.
Councilman Watson, appreciate that. City attorney report.
I actually have two things this evening, and I know that's unusual because I rarely say anything. Uh, number one, this is Mike Kurzwell's last meeting with the planning commission. He is moving on to Idaho, I believe. So I wish to thank him for all the benefit that he's been to me in the last year and a half, and perhaps he would take the opportunity to do that as well. Number two, the mayor has asked me to conduct some training because we have several new members of the planning commission. Rather than do that for an hour or two or three or four, what I'm proposing is that over the next several meetings between now and the end of the year, that we maybe take five, 10, 15 minutes in your work session each night. I'd like to get an hour in before the end of the year, if you're amenable to that. I have a couple of topics that I'd like to bring up, but I'm certainly willing to entertain topics or requests from you uh, and squeeze those in. So I will be gone in the month of October, but if we could do a couple in September, one or two in November, depending on how that shakes out with Thanksgiving. And again, one or so before. one or two in November, depending on how that shakes out with Thanksgiving. And again, one or so before Christmas, we could probably get an hour in before the end of the year.
I think that'd be great.
Thank you. We'll start and if you've got topics, let me know.
As, what was the requirement for how many hours we, is there a requirement, how many hours we're supposed to be at in certain mid town period?
I think it's four per year, I think. And you get, uh, one hour for attending X number of planning commission meetings. And so that takes it down to three per year. And of course you did one hour of training for the new members before you could be sworn in and start taking action. So, um, you'll have a couple of years under your, a couple of hours rather, under your belt by the end of the year. And if we do an hour here, that'll give you three out of the four. I think it's four.
Yeah, I think that's correct. All right. Over upcoming agenda items.
All right. So we, we've received quite a few applications. Uh, we are still looking at, uh, the, well, let's see, I'm going to pull up a more updated map for you. Need to get the new parcels on this computer. All right. So we received an application. Uh, I believe I mentioned last time they're, they're going to start moving forward again on this property. This is a commercial piece. Um, so just a strip commercial with a drive through. So we may see that next time. Um, maybe the end of September, depends on how quickly they get it to us. Uh, we also have, let's see. Um, we, we've received the third plat for the Park West development. Uh, that's been going on for a few years in the old RC Willie property. So the, uh, phase three, oh, two, too far. Phase three is in the old parking lot area here. They're going to be putting in some townhomes and single family, uh, properties as well. Um, we, let's see. We also have a revision, uh, back to that, that other property I was just at, uh, to the west. Um, so we, we've already approved a site plan a few months ago and they're changing that to remove the drive through. Uh, we did ARC meeting for that a couple of weeks ago and, uh, they're just currently working on getting us updated plans. Um, we have received also a conditional use permit. This is for a, uh, where, where is five hundred here? So this is for a, a business. It's going to be an expansion of an existing home business. Um, I believe I went too far. The north. Yes. Okay. So it's this property here. Um, so we have a conditional use permit for the business and then also a site plan. And the site plan is pretty minimal, but, uh, doesn't need to be approved according to our code. And then we have also received, uh, for the City's Glen property, that one that we were talking about, the residential rezone. The property to the west of that, we have a new phase that's come in. Um, and we also have, uh, another one that's, we did a rezone for a few months ago. And that is down here. So we've, we've received a plan for this property as well that we'll be looking at. Um, at a concept level, they anticipate getting a preliminary in soon. So that's what we have right now.
Yeah, I remember that. Uh, I remember that meeting well. Yeah. That was an eventful one. All right. Thank you, Royce. Um, commissioner reports. I'm going to back on, um, uh, thank Mike for service. Uh, he's definitely been a big help for me over the last few weeks. Um, so thank you. And, uh, you'll be missed.
Very much.
Um, that was kind of a little, kind of shot in the gut a little bit right there when that was announced. So you'll be missed. Any other commissioner report? I might need them. All right. We will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.